Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh and very good morning to everyone. I am pleased to be able to moderate this session. First of all, I'd like to extend my sincere thanks and appreciation to Tan Sri Majid and Tan Sri Michael for inviting me to this conference. I am from FGV Holingsburgh and I'm proud to say that we have plantations in Sabah and we also have other facilities, including a refinery in Tawau. And actually, one-third of our operations are in Sabah. As mentioned, and as you can see in the program, this is a special session. It devotes, it is devoted to the discussion on the impact of geopolitics on the palm oil industry. And we have a lineup of very eminent speakers to be with us today. They have been duly introduced by the emcee. I do not wish to reintroduce them and read their CVs because even the titles of these speakers are long enough for us to digest. But as you can see, they are really suitable for discussion on this particular topic. Ladies and gentlemen, geopolitics certainly plays a major role, not only in the context of the palm oil industry, but also in the context of our everyday life. We talk about geopolitics at the global level. One thing that comes to mind is rivalry between the superpowers, in particular between China and the United States. But also, we talk about the impact of decisions made by major powers such as the EU. Some of these points have already been mentioned by Tan Sri Majid and Dr. Rizal Avandi earlier this morning. And I'm sure we can hear more from the speakers today. There are, of course, many aspects to this particular discussion that I think we can hear from the speakers. And without further ado, I would wish to give them the floor. But first, some housekeeping matters, so to speak. We have about one hour for this whole session and we have six speakers. So in order to be able to try and manage the time as efficiently as possible, I would request the speakers to devote about six or seven minutes to their presentation so that will allow some time for the participants to ask questions, to forward their comments. And other than that, I think we should be ready for our session. First, we begin with Tan Sri Michael Yo, President of KSI Strategic Institute for Asia-Pacific. Tan Sri, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Tan Sri Moderator, my fellow distinguished panelists. Tan Sri, excellency ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to very briefly share some mega trends which we think would have an impact on the whole world. I think we live now in an increasingly vukavol, which is more volatile, complex, uncertain, ambiguous. And we need to be able to take into account the vukavol that we are now living in. I believe also the world has become increasingly more dangerous. Conflict evolves in Europe, in the Middle East, there's civil war in Myanmar, in parts of Africa, rising tensions in the South China Sea and Taiwan Straits, and the US-China trade in technology wars that may worsen after the US elections. The world is also pivoting to a multilateral global order. As seen in recent BRICS summit in Russia, BRICS has now become a very major global force. Hence, all of these geopolitical risks and uncertainties will impact all economies and industries in the next few years. We also feel that should Trump wins the US election in a week's time, geopolitical risks and uncertainties will rise further. All of these geopolitical uncertainties will impact on all aspects of the global economy. We can see increased protectionism, higher tariffs, and even non-tariff barriers that could be imposed by many countries and more so by the US to Trump become president again. Hence, costs will go up. All economic sectors, including the palm oil industry, need to take into account these global mega trends and the geopolitical challenges and uncertainties. This underscores the great importance for enhanced collaboration and partnerships. We need to work more closely together, seek understanding, and have more dialogue and exchanges. The sea box sea need to be also further strengthened and more countries being brought into the sea box sea. Another geostrategic trend is a growing push for sustainability and climate action. This is not only in the West, but also in the global south. Climate change is a global threat threatening our planet Earth and no country should stay silent or do nothing. The palm oil industry needs to do more also to implement climate action and ESG measures as well as the UN Sustainable Development Goals, leave no one behind. I believe that as we pivot towards climate action, there could perhaps be an opportunity for plantation companies in the carbon market and in carbon exchange. Plantations can become carbon storage sites to be used for carbon credits, giving plantation companies another revenue stream. And hence, I think the need for certification of plantations as CUS sites and for carbon exchange needs to perhaps be speeded up. But we need to also take into account that in some parts of the world, particularly in the US, ESG polymix have pushed back against ESG. Some of the investment funds who have been promoting ESGs are now being pushed to perhaps relook ESG because of increased cost of ESG. Unfortunately, our prime administration will further push back ESG. I believe also that the palm oil industry needs to pivot to technology, including AI and digitalization. AI power is growing exponentially. Plantation companies need to incorporate AI into your business and plantation practices. However, with the rise of AI, cyber security has also become more important and all companies need to also address the cyber security threat. So these are some of my very brief views. Sir Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Tan Sri Michael. Quite brief and succinct presentation, but very rich in the arguments and as to the problems and solutions faced by the palm oil industry. May I now move on to Dr. Rizal? You have the floor.
Thank you, Tan Sri. Rest in peace for the session for me. So I'd like to use my slide view. Not this one, this is for the next session, for the UDR. Could use the other one? Yeah, could use the other one? The other one, the other file. So while waiting, excellencies, in many occasion, palm oil has been treated unfairly. In fact, palm oil is helping and also support the food security as well as also contributing in the energy security in some countries. And I'll be go over on this and like to see here why palm oil is a low profile. The palm oil industry use 8.2% land of the harvested area, which is in 2022-2023, is only about 8.2%, while the production, 8.2% of the land occupied by palm oil and contributing to the fulfillment of the world vegetable oil demand by 42%. So I think the world need to thanks to palm oil industry instead of to blame the palm oil industry. So I think it is unfair. For example, soya bean occupying 45.5% of the land, but only contributing 27.7% of the world demand all the vegetable oil. So I think we need to be realistic on this and seek the fairness of the global people to look into the palm oil industry in the fairly manner. Secondly, the question is how to fit the world demand for the vegetable oil for the next couple of years? For example, according to the conservative prediction, it will be requiring until 2030 by 51 million tons of the wood vegetable oil. Where this vegetable oil will be coming from? Just for example, I calculated if it is vegetable oil demand for the next until 2030 requiring 51 million is coming from soya bean, meaning that we need to open additional 98 million hectares in order to produce 51 million ton of the vegetable oil. What about sunflower? Sunflower will require 72 million hectares. What about rapeseed? Rapeseed planting requiring 52 million hectares additional need to be cleared off, need to be opened. What about the oil? If it is palm oil and then only requiring 13,13 million hectares, so meaning that given the high productivity of the palm oil, as I said, the world need to thanks to the palm oil industry, not even to blame the palm oil industry. But of course, what has been doing by government Malaysia, government of Indonesia is committing in producing sustainable palm oil. So that's why the respective government developing called national certification that can meet the sustainability standard, MSPO, ASPO. So I think this is the message. And this is another side that according to this data, you can see the production growth is in the past 10 years is declining. So the first column is the 1990 until 2010, it is still rapidly, palm oil still growing, but in the next decade is declining. So the declining of the palm oil is lower than the consumption rate. So what does it mean? It's going to be lack of supply of the palm oil. As I said, because of the supply of the palm oil declining rapidly because for many reasons, the world demand in having this sustainable palm oil as well as also the commitment from the respective producing country government not to open new land, the production is going to be declining. So the decline 3.6% is below the consumption growth, which is 4.2%. So soon or later, the price of palm oil will go just keep like what we have right now. Interestingly, this is the palm oil production divided into region, Asia, Africa, America, and Oceania. So we can see in all many regions, except PNG, Oceania, contributing still growing, but this is declining. This is our global challenge. And then just see, this is some little calculation based on regression analysis. You can see the European market, the EU coefficient has a negative to the overall world palm oil demand, meaning that the market of EU is declining over the time. While for the rest is positive, I can estimate India, China, US is the matured market, which is the increase, but not as high as Pakistan and Bangladesh. They have a bigger coefficient. So EU is a declining market. So I think this is just, this is interesting just to see. This is the price of some commodities and I made the index 100 at the time, at the first year. The fluctuation of the oil, the palm oil as well as the soya bean has been fluctuated at the same rate, at the same pace. So it's very interesting. And also, I just input the other variable, which is crude oil. And you can see the crude oil movement is almost similar to the price fluctuation of palm oil as well as the soya bean oil. Most, much of the countries using palm oil and soya for biodiesel. So that's why the fluctuation of the price of palm oil as well as soya bean is fluctuated as the crude oil is fluctuated. So this is challenging. If suppose if the Iran-Israel war escalated, we can estimate the crude oil will increase and also impacting to the world, palm oil price will goes up. So I think with this, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rizal. In fact, he's given us an overview of where palm oil is compared to the other major edible oils. And he's also given us a picture as to what could happen if things go wrong geopolitically in respect of not only palm oil, but also world oil supply and demand. May I now move on to the next speaker, Professor Toto Chin. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Tan Sri. So I'm an extension. Normally, I like to talk from the basic. So what is the meaning of geopolitics? Geopolitics is the combination towards geography and politics. Simply put, meaning that the political situation arising from the geographical situation is a simple term. That means this geopolitics is more like local, something like happening around your neighbors or something near to your own country. There is a meaning of geopolitics. In this major context or in ASEAN context, what is the most, what I call risky kind of political, a geopolitical, what I call situation will happen? I think because Malacca Strait, everybody know is very important to our, this is world trade. It's about 30% of the goods flow through this Malacca Strait, especially to this China, Japan. Two thirds of China's imported goods or exported goods have to go through Malacca Strait. And Japan relies about 80% of their oil coming from the Malacca Strait. That's why Malacca Strait is very important and also very important for our palm oil because our major export is going to this Pakistan, India, China, the three most important purchasers of palm oil. That's why we must make sure that Malacca Strait is stable and particularly safe so that it will not hamper the flow of world trade. Because as we say, this Malacca Strait is a gateway from Middle East to the, what I call these northeastern countries like China, Japan, all these countries, and also going to Europe. So that's why Malacca Strait is very important. This is the most, what I call, I can see the most risky to our palm oil industry is this, what I call the Malacca Strait. That's why what sort of thing will happen in the Malacca Strait? In case of any dispute within China and Philippines over this South China Sea issue or China take military action against Taiwan to process Taiwan, this sort of thing means decisions at the Malacca Strait will be very risky because US should come and interfere or maybe US will come and block this Malacca Strait because they know that two thirds of China's goods have to go through Malacca Strait. So that's why if anything, this US are going to take action to block this Malacca Strait will affect our this palm oil industry in Asia, Indonesia, Thailand, all the South Asian countries, this what I call Singapore also. So that's why this is the most, what I call risk to our geopolitics is this, I call the safety of the passage of our Malacca Strait. This is number one. Second thing, what I call this geopolitical risk and now it's law climate change. Now everybody know that climate change is very important. And then these European countries always accuse Malaysia, Indonesia for this deforestation issue. That's why this thing, what I call, will affect this, what I call Malaysia's palm production and Indonesian production. So that's why I wish to appeal to this, what I call council of palm oil producing countries. They should join together, now assisting only three members. Indonesia were number one producer with 56% of palm oil production. Malaysia is 26%, number two. Third one is Thailand, about 4 to 5%. And now we got three members, Honduras and this Indonesia, Malaysia. They should all admit all other members like Colombia, New Babu, New Guinea, what I call these other countries, Colombia, this. So they will stronger voice, this what will happen to these OPEC countries. So I think now basically Indonesia, Malaysia are fighting on their own battles. Especially Malaysia always have to lead the delegation to these European countries to sort of talk to them about this Malaysia is doing this sustainable palm oil production. So that's why the matter of what I call deforestation issue does not arise. Because after you cut down the trees, then you replace it by this palm oil. Of course, you want to talk about overall, Malaysia still got a lot of rainforest. That's why if we fail to measure, we have to calculate how much carbon saving by having this many forests and talk about this deforestation, it's only a portion of it. That's why you must calculate the negative and the positive of what carbon credit we have. Then we can prove to the world that Malaysia or Indonesia, they are not really doing any sort of deforestation for the sale of planting this palm oil. I think that is very fair. Scientifically, we can do that because we can see how much carbon emission to the atmosphere and how much these trees will absorb carbon dioxide. That's why why people talking about must plant trees in order because trees will absorb carbon dioxide. That's why because talk about global warming, the major causes, the major cause of global warming is because of carbon emission. Got 80% of this global warming is because of carbon dioxide emission. Your carbon dioxide retain the heat ejected by the atmosphere so that so they will form this global warming or greenhouse site effect. That's why we have to make sure that Malaysia actually playing a role. Indonesia also got a lot of forest, Malaysia also. In total, actually, we are still contributing a lot this what I call carbon credit to the whole world. That's why we are not really damaging our atmosphere. I think that I think there is one thing we have to really look into it. Another thing is about this, what I call for palm oil. You know that palm oil is very important to many industry like cosmetic industry, detergent industry. Because in the whole world, 70% of this skincare, facial care or this cosmetic products all made from palm oil. Your palm oil will not melt during the high temperature. These are what they just are, this what I call competitors like rapeseed oil, soya bean oil, soya bean oil, sunflower oil cannot do. That's why this palm oil actually mostly is used in the cosmetic industry, not only for edible oil. I think this, you no matter how palm oil cannot be replaced because its cost of production is the lowest in the whole world. So that's why this palm oil is very important to this, what I call the industry, especially as I mentioned, the cosmetic industry, detergent industry, all this thing. That's why I think we can sort of, call acid with other, what I call this oil industry like this soya bean. Soya normally be used in this, what I call, these are North American countries. Even China also use part of it, is use soya bean oil. And then sunflowers, oil and rapeseed oil normally is used are used in this European country. There's a reason why this UK, what I call EU always come up to sort of, come out to really sort of attack this palm oil partly because of internal competition, not really because of what I call global warming issue. I think we are low, scientifically, just I mentioned, we have to really measure the carbon credit we have saved for the world and so-called the deforestation issue. I think that will be fairer to all the countries in the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Toto. In fact, ladies and gentlemen, Toto Chin has brought a very important point, which is the security of sea lines of communications. He's given the example of the Straits of Malacca, as we know, about 90,000 vessels apply through the Straits of Malacca annually. So that shows how important that body of water is, not only to the neighboring countries, namely Malaysia and Indonesia, and Cross Island, Singapore, but also to the rest of the world. Now, as we can see, what is happening in the Red Sea now, the problem of communication through that body of water. Shipping has gone down tremendously. And of course, the level of danger to shipping and commerce for the rest of the world has also increased. And as we know, in the context of Ukraine-Russia war, when it first started, shipping in the Black Sea was severely affected. So that's a very important point as far as the impact of geopolitics on the palm oil industry goes. So without further ado, may I now move on to our next speaker, Mr. Ari Adiputra from the Institute of Development Studies. the Institute of Development Studies, Saba. Mr. Arif, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I'm going to be providing geopolitical implications on this state of Saba. So identifying three dimensions, just to keep it brief, for Saba's palm oil industry. First is being domestic policy, the second would be international and regional markets and overall global sustainable practices. So rightly mentioned by Dato Chin, that Malaysia contributes twenty-six percent of the global palm oil supply, twenty-five percent is drawn from Saba itself. So Malaysia and Saba also has great latitude, significant latitude in how it tries to pursue leadership as a world palm oil producer. However, these approaches aren't unilateral. If you can look at the geographical vision between West Malaysia and East Malaysia, bifurcated by the South China Sea, it's almost representative of divergent aspirations between the east and the west, whereas West Malaysia has introduced the MPSO, its own certification prerogatives, whereas Saba has tried to pursue a hundred percent commitment to RSPOs through JASPO and other organizations. So there is already a conflict of interest here when it comes to palm oil certification. And MPSO aligns with the federal government's approaches and policies to hedge closer to China over the recent decades, whereas the primacy of the west seems to have faltered under the past few administrations, whereas Saba wants to tap more into these kinds of western markets. So there's already that conflict to consider. So this is geopolitical consideration, which the state government and the federal government needs to resolve when it comes to uniting or even harmonizing its approaches. Would Malaysia and the federal government be acceptable to different types of certification? Because ninety percent of palm oil shareholders or private smallholders in Malaysia are MPSO certified, but how would that play out in the market environment when it comes to exporting to the European Union, the European markets, or even the western markets, which are more environmentally conscious and has its more stringent requirements, whereas the MPSO is a bit more light and has to consider, is more of consideration of the context of Malaysia, but rather it seems more as a hedging strategy to bring in countries such as China or India into the fold. And this is also contingent on particular strategies adopted by the federal government to socialize Beijing to become a more responsible stakeholder and also provides multiple axes of consultation that allows Beijing to see that cooperation is better in confrontation in other avenues such as the South China Sea. Now moving on to the second dimension, which is the regional and international markets. Nine percent of Malaysia's palm oil exports mostly goes to China and India with less stringent requirements for palm oil certification, which is why the MPSO seems to be very attractive for the current administration. However, we can overlook also that the EU still plays an important market for Malaysia. And I believe Saba understands that this market is one that is very conscious environmentally speaking and that speaks more to Saba's sensitivities and disposition toward sustainability and environmental practices. Almost a lot of land is conserved in Saba, so it needs to be made sustainable. So that's why JASPO is also adopted. So in a way, you can approach the China and Indian markets as well, the very critical markets, I have to say, but you cannot overlook as well the EU as well or even the western markets. These are opportunities and avenues that Malaysia and particularly Saba needs to consider as destination for its palm oil exports despite different consumer demands. As Dato Chin rightly mentioned, the EU does prefer grape seed oil and other types of commodities that's not really palm oil driven. However, the EU Renewable Energy Directive Number Two, which sets out particular guidelines on not taking exports if it has any traceability of deforestation and other kinds of unsustainable practices, this would have to be a consideration for Malaysia and Saba, considering also that the EU still holds great tremendous amount of leadership in the international community and does set a lot of the protocols for the international base order that a lot of countries would still follow. That means that even though the EU market may not be as considerable to, as compared to China and India, it still plays a role in defining and regulating the international community and how it operates within this kind of market. It's ironic because even though Malaysia and Indonesia contributes the most, it does not actually have a lot of pull or influence in how it influences that market. So lastly, just the idea on sustainability. When it comes to sustainability, it's not unilateral. Different countries have different sensitivities and dispositions, whereas this provides an opportunity for Malaysia to have with its two different types of certification between Malaysia as a whole and Saba. It provides options, choices for countries who would like to see more greener and more friendlier traceability in regards to environmental protection. But as well, there is also other markets that hasn't been really considered, can markets in the Middle East or even in Africa with the introduction of Malaysia as a partner to the BRICS, this opens a lot of opportunities for Malaysia to experiment how it wants to go about with its palm oil industry. So that is why experimentation in this industry is very important and that Malaysia, or more specifically, the central government has to be more flexible in regards to the aspirations of each of its particular federal states, Saba being especially one of them. So being a major contributor, quarter of Malaysia's total exports, Saba should have more of a say in how it would like to regulate its own markets as well. And this, this also requires a lot of assistance to develop this industry. Saba, a lot of it is private smallholders, which requires a lot of investment and assistance from both the state and the federal government. So there's going to be a lot of negotiation and back and forth. And there I say, if this is not properly tackled, it could be seen as a political flashpoint as well as Saba seeks to increase its own autonomy. That is where one consideration of geopolitical flashpoint, sometimes we see it in stuff like South China Sea, Malacca Strait, but we also have to consider it over here at home as well when it comes to addressing these concerns. So these are the three main points to consider. It all grounds back to how Saba wants to position itself in the context of the Federation of Malaysia and how it wants to operate and project itself onto the international community. So I think that's it for me. Back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Arif. You have narrowed it down to the Saba perspective on the whole situation. I think now we can move on to the next speaker, Mr. Girish Ramachandran. He's the co-founder and CEO of Irga Syndrome. Sir Ramachandran has got extensive experience not only in palm oil, but also in respect of other crops as well. So may I give you the floor, please?
Thank you, Dr. Sri. I've got some slides here, which I'd just like to share, which I believe some of the speakers were so touched upon, but it's not all bad news out there. So I'm going to try and maybe put a positive spin towards this because we all sound a bit gloomy today, hearing all the negativity out there. The way we should be looking at geopolitics is we need to look at opportunities, not the challenges or barriers in front of us. And we have seen a lot of discussion on EU and western markets and sustainability, trade barriers and so on, but really it's about looking at sustainable practices and seeing how we can make money out of it. And that's going to be crucial. The second is, I think this is a totally over-regulated industry and I think we need to really fight to make sure that we are heard. This is important. And the third aspect is, I think we are the global green leader. Yeah? I was looking at some statistics on carbon sequestration versus primary forest, secondary forest and a palm oil tree, and it's showing very, very positive data, but it's not out there. Nobody knows about it. So if we look at CO2 and deforestation, just have a look at this colorful map here, it is got nothing to do with Malaysia. It's got nothing to do with Malaysia, right? Let's get this very clear. This is statistics from nineteen seventy to twenty twenty-one and anything in darker colors is not producing. In terms of market access, I think we got to start looking at expanding our own markets. We can't plant more palm oil. We can be more productive on our land, but really let's start exploring other markets. And I'm a big fan of Africa. I spend a lot of time trying to understand the market there and I think if we do a partnership with the various associations that we have in the room today and just look at Africa alone and try and see how we can work together. The other aspect is really around population growth, which I will talk a bit more, but the logistics and supply chain, we heard about this, food shortages, market volatility, it's becoming increasingly important to have the supply chain secure and please take this very seriously, especially if you're exporting. It's something to think about, it can change your business model overnight. And really, I think local processing capacity, I like the deputy minister's take on going downstream. I think Saba has huge potential to go midstream and downstream and become a powerhouse, working together with Sorawak, if I may say so, because you need to look at Borneo together. And really, if we look at this in terms of palm oil yields in Malaysia in twenty twenty, are right up to twenty-one hundred with and without adaptation. It's a negative trend, which means we need to be more productive, we need more research, we need more technology utilization and we need to secure our future. Biodiesel policies are also kicking in very strongly and this is affecting geopolitical aspects, but maybe Malaysia can play that role as the renewable green palm that's out there. You know, most of our complete palm oil estates and the mills are carbon negative and we should use that to our advantage. Two more slides. So this is a slide stolen from Dr. Carl Beck Nielsen of United Plantation, very important slide. In the year twenty-one hundred, one in three people will be an African. The second one will be an Asian and that's the growth. So what are they going to eat? What are they going to buy? And that's our focus, where we should be focusing towards. I'm not saying we leave EU out of it, but really that's going to be your demand. So why are we looking towards the wrong regions? And finally, which is something that's very close to what we do at Erga and Kengoya, is worker reliance. We're going to have a massive problem because eighty percent of all our workers are foreign workers and they're vulnerable to immigration policies. But more importantly is we're losing billions. We're losing, you know, ten, twenty billion ringgit a year in uncollected fruits and so on. So we got to start rethinking the way that we organize our businesses and going towards, you know, digitalization. And if we don't address this, you know, you're going to see yields come down in Malaysia from, you know, fifteen, right, probably back to twelve because nobody wants to go into the field anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramachandran. You have addressed essentially the brass tech issues that's faced by the industry as a whole. And I fully agree with you that, you know, the industry needs to reinvent itself. It's very interesting that there's one researcher who told me this, that he said the Latin Americans and Central Americans are producing very high yields in palm oil, oil palm production. And it seems that they have been successful or they're still successful because they've been reading the textbooks written by Malaysians. Unfortunately, maybe we Malaysians are not reading those textbooks ourselves now. As always, yields have come down. The national average is about sixteen times, I think, and costs, of course, have increased tremendously, not of our making, but certainly this is something that we need to address. I told that our last speaker, Dr. Oh Yisan, is uncontrollable. He's apparently overseas. Yeah? Yeah. So that means in a way, we have a little bit more time. So in any event, we've completed the first round among the speakers. I would like to open the session now for some, for questions and answers. If there's anyone from the floor who wish to ask any questions, I think there are microphones around the room for you to access. Anybody? Otherwise, may I ask any member of the panel to add to their comments? Dato, Dato Chin, you have a comment?
Okay. In order to put this global warming in a proper perspective, that's why I've got no time to talk about it. So I mentioned, actually, the largest producers of what I call so-called global warming, okay about cumulative kind of global warming factor, actually is coming from this US, the second one is from the EU, or this what I call European kind of cumulative from talking about, since industrial revolution up to now, we can't talk about the present only. That's why it's not fair to say Malaysia, Indonesia, they are doing the deforestation. Actually, the kind of thing is very minimum, you look at the whole world, the major producers of this global warming is caused by the cumulative carbon dioxide emission from European countries because they are the first one to implement this industrial revolution in the eighteenth century or something, until now, two hundred years. Then second one is US. US also, after these western countries or these European countries, they are the second one to go into this what I call industrial revolution. So that's why the time you can see many factories were opened in this US. They thought only they shift to other countries, shift to China. China is number three. Number four is India. Malaysia and Indonesia is nowhere in the list. So that's why we have to put in this proper perspective. Of course, you talk about present one, number one, what I call global warming is coming from China because they emit a lot of carbon, because it's, to be fair, China is the world what I call factories, manufacturing base in the world. So of course, they will emit more carbon dioxide. But you talk about this global warming contributed by this palm oil industry, actually is very minimum, not even in the least also. That's why it's not fair for this European country to attack Malaysia for deforestation and this Indonesia for deforestation. Actually, we cut down the forest, but we replant it with this palm oil also. So palm oil also can absorb carbon dioxide later on. If you let, if you just cut down the timber without doing any replanting, then we'll say it's considered deforestation. This the thing is not so correct also, it's not deforestation. You do something to cut down this one, to do the planting for the palm oil. If not just cut down the timber, that's it, and then never do the replanting, they would call deforestation. Thank you.
Thank you. But result, perhaps you may want to address a couple of issues relating to the consumption of palm oil and palm products as a whole in respect of renewable energy, for example, biofuel, biomass, because the palm tree is a wonder tree. It's every part of it can be utilized actually. So perhaps you may want to comment about that and as it relates to the whole. So perhaps you may want to comment about that and as it relates to the whole market situation.
Thank you, Tansri. Yes, indeed, because of the limited supply, as I explained earlier, that the world supply of the palm oil has been stagnated. And actually, some continent like in Africa has also can give some opportunity because the yield in most of African countries are very, very low. Even in Ghana, for example, only half of the Malaysia average yield. Meaning that if the productivity in Ghana and also some other African palm oil producing countries can be initiated, it can contribute to the self-fulfillment of the demand for security, food security in Africa. So they don't need to import from other parts of the world, which is becoming scarce. Even for Indonesia, for example, the new government could be increasing the biodiesel program 35 toward B40, meaning that there will be some additional 1.5 million more for domestic purpose. Meaning if the production domestically in Indonesia is just slightly increased, as we can see in the past few years, so meaning that the amount available for the export will be getting less and less. And here, the usage in Indonesia for biodiesel purpose is already exceeding the purpose for oleochemical as well as also for the food purpose. So meaning that the food purpose and energy purpose from the palm oil is becoming also matter soon or later. If there is no acceleration or increasing the productivity by accelerating the replanting, Indonesia is facing low replanting program, which is currently about 40,000 hectares to 60,000 hectares. From the number that the Indonesian smallholders need to do is 270,000 hectares. So it's only very like 25% to 30% of the need to accelerate for replanting program to increase the productivity. Because currently, the smallholders occupying 41% of the land in Indonesia belongs to the smallholders, also having lower productivity compared to the industry. So there are some opportunity within Indonesia, like also, I think, as discussed by other speakers on overcoming the labor shortage in Malaysia. I think Malaysia now is moving towards to more automatization, mechanization, and also the introduction of AI, which is, I think, is very impressive. So this is one of the effort to overcome for the labor shortage and also for the increased labor cost. So the industry need to cope, as we just were witnessing on the price fluctuation. The palm oil also need to maintain their competitiveness. I think otherwise, we'll be shifted to other vegetable oils. So I think that's some of the note that we need to think about it and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can take one question from the floor. I was told there's someone over there? Yeah, please.
Okay. So thank you for the information that you have shared with us. I think what we are looking for right now is how do you mitigate? How do you respond to all these geopolitical challenges that we have been facing? In other words, what Dr. Rizal has said is true. We need to work a little bit more about digitalization. We need to work a little bit more together with other countries. But what are the specifics that can be, that we can do to, you know, address challenges that you guys have been facing? Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right? There's a big challenge there. Anyone wish, perhaps? Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I'm third generation palm oil. Both my granddad were in palm oil industry. I think it's all about collaboration. We have too many organizations. We have repeated facets of activities happening. Yeah? And I like what CPOPC is doing. And I think if we can bring together a single unified collaborative model, I think we have a clear winner. This means people. It's about people. It's about egos. And I think we just need to, you know, stop working in silos and be collaborative. We know what we want to do. We know the strategy. We know the processes. We know the implementation. But, you know, we've got to bring this together.
I think for Malaysia or this Indonesia or ASEAN countries, most bodies must keep Malacca Street safe. That is the most important thing. So that's why a few issue we need to address together. First thing about South China Sea issue, because there are many overlapping claims about this Canary Islands, amongst this Malaysia, Vietnam, Philippines, Brunei, all these countries. So this is why I think, I think all the ASEAN countries and China should cooperate. That's why China come up with what I call South China Sea Good Behavior Pact, so that everybody behave themselves temporarily, set aside the territory claims of themselves, and they should commonly develop those overlapping, what I call sea, so that they can get the core benefits together. I think it's one best solution to resolve this problem. Because once this ASEAN country and China do have any dispute regarding this South China Sea, what I call the claimations of this land or sea, and then we will not problem. The US or other power or NATO got no reason to interfere. When there's no reason to interfere, the whole Malacca Street will be okay. So another issue is about this China and Taiwan, so that we hope for the peaceful reconciliation within China and Taiwan, so that there will be no problem also, because US also got no reason to interfere. So I think in order to prevent this thing happening in this, what I call geopolitically, we have to make sure South China Sea is stable. There is no, they call dispute among all the countries. Now, only problem is in China and Philippines regarding some islands that claim each other. So I think this is a thing, I think, what I call the Cooperation Pact between ASEAN and China will avoid what I call geopolitically unstable in this Malacca Street. Second thing is talking about China issue with Taiwan. I think these two really affect our ASEAN countries. Other issue like in this European Union is a bit far away from Malaysia. But I mean, talking about most pressing issue, I think is this Malacca Street must be safe, and then there is no blockage of Malacca Street will happen. I think this one, and then all the ASEAN country will prosper, and then there will be no problem. Thank you.
Anyone else? For result, please.
Yes, thank you very much. I think I need to underline the importance of having worked together collaboratively among the stakeholders. Firstly, the industry. Of course, the industry is not only the, from the producing countryside, but also the industry at the consuming countryside, which is the buyer. So we need to work together, for example, like Unilever utilizing the product of palm oil. They have some program in educating the smallholders how to fulfill this sustainable palm oil. If like this industry has this kind of works, meaning that they are educating these smallholders to meet this sustainable palm oil, meaning that all the palm oil that will be produced will also meet the sustainability standard. Second one is the policymakers. Policymakers, of course, under the establishment of CPOPC, the two largest producing country government thought that working together in doing the global diplomacy, in doing advocating globally is much effective than work spiritually than work individually. So I think the impact by having the joint mission, the ministers, Indonesia Minister of Malaysia to Brazil will be much more impact. And now we have also Honduras and hopefully, like Nigeria now is already applying to become the observer country. They have three more observer countries, PNG as well as Colombia and Ghana. They are just about to ratify domestically, once they ratify and then becoming full member. So the membership of CPOPC hopefully will be much more inclusive, representing the African continent, the Asia, Southeast Asia continent, by also Thailand. We hope, we already have the rubber cooperation among three countries, but I think Thailand also need to work together under the palm oil diplomacy. As well as also on promoting the smallholders in the palm oil producing country. CPOPC is conducting annual event, international smallholder workshop, with the objective is exchanging their experience, how to improve the productivity, also learning about the update on the impact of the UDR. And also, we have, next week, we are going to organize academician and also the students get together. We'd like to hear this perspective from the university, from the think tank, how would the palm oil should be developed? So those stakeholders, different part of layers, we work together. The policymakers, the industry, as well as also the smallholders and also the academician. So we need to work in the parallel manner. It cannot be done only by the government. It cannot be done only by the industry. It also cannot be done by the academician. So we work together under the orchestra, that we have a global challenges faced by the palm oil from the supply side, from meeting the global sustainability standard. So we need to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're running out of time. May I now take the privilege of closing this session? But before I do that, I would like to invite the speakers to have their last say for about a minute each. Can we start with Mr. Ramachandran? And then we go out this way.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe we should also start to look inwards a bit in as the Malaysian context, yeah? I think we got a lot of things to sort out in our own home ground before we start looking globally and what's going on overseas. So to me, please focus on your plantations. Forget about head office. Make sure your operations are top-notch. Digitalization helps. Thank you.
There you go. Dharif?
Yeah, I think my closing remark is that we have room to experiment. Malaysia has a position of leadership that we can throw our weight around. However, Malaysia isn't unitary in its approach. And I think to address that last question about the challenges, how we can solve this geopolitically, I think we should adopt similar to what Mr. Gir said, is the cooperation, collaboration, but not at the nation-state level. We should try bring it down to at least on the localized level, regional level. BIM Targa is a subregional organization which can focus on a lot of things, palm oil included. Why don't we find more methods to empower that, rather than having to wait for respective central governments to always make the decision that may not be, that may not be reflective of the realities on the ground? Sabah, Southern Philippines, Kalimantan have completely different aspirations to their central governments. So why not we look towards unilateral arrangements that can assist in empowering localized industries? Of course, this came under fire when brought up to the Prime Minister. He says, I mean, lateralisms are a blight that would upend the international rules base. But you won't know till we tried. UK experienced Brexit, and Scotland was able to negotiate on its own terms to get what it needs on its own grievances, without having Whitehall deciding arbitrarily what they need to do. Scotland knows what it wants, so it does what it needs to do. Sarawak is also paving the way in terms of regional leadership. Sabah can do so as well in regards to palm oil industry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, talking about this green economy and circular economy. I think palm oil is the most, what I call good example for this green economy and circular economy. Because palm oil is no waste for palm oil. Everything can be used in palm oil. There is, a fresh branch can be made into biomass, biofuel. Not about edible oil, just I mentioned about cosmetic product, detergent, soap powder, shampoo, all these things, all can be made from this palm oil and can use in the pharmaceutical product also. So everything, even the trunk of the tree also can be made into furnitures or anything. So actually, there is no waste to the environment. You talk about global warming, circular economy, it's a decycle, because basically the whole, whole tree of this palm oil can be used. Nothing is a waste. So I think this is a good example, saying that palm oil is, I think, is one of the most, what I call, not only good for edible oil, as what I call detergent, as a cosmetic product, also you can use as a biofuel, and then there is no waste to the environment. That's why it's a good example of clean economy and circular economy. Thank you.
Thank you. But Rizal?
Yes, thank you. My last word is we need to work together in increasing the productivity of palm oil industry as well as also in developing this sustainability credential. Thank you.
Tansri?
Tansri Michael, you have the last word.
I would say we need to do more in terms of palm oil public diplomacy. We've got to go out to the markets to provide education, information to consumers and buyers that palm oil is a good product, is healthy product. We need to debunk the notion that palm oil destroys the environment, that palm oil fuels orangutan, and then that it is unhealthy to consume palm oil. So we need to debunk that. More information would be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we've heard from the various speakers. I think we've had a very good and enriching discussion. Start off with geopolitics, but at the end of it, we know that there are challenges, there are opportunities. Geopolitics should be on everyone's mind, not only in respect of the palm industry, but all industries. But again, what is important is what we do at home as well as regionally and globally, that will ultimately decide on where we go insofar as the industry is concerned. So with that, may I ask you to show our appreciation to the speakers by giving them a big hand? Thank you. So with that, we end this session. May I now hand this over to the organizers? Thank you.
Thank you.